I thought somebody else might have been calling me at the same time my way or something.
Might have been, I had a bunch of background noise when I called in, and I'm not here, that's another of the Jews, so it sounded like we're still in there.
You guys ready for the pledge?
Are you there, Marvin?
You ready for the pledge?
Well, I don't know if we are or not.
Soon, soon as Marvin's ready.
I know they, they were supposed to have the telecon for being going on, uh, for other people to call in and see what was going on in the council.
Yeah, I hear it, I don't know if they're talking to you, to be honest with you.
Well, that's, that's with me. Uh, I don't know, but I, I did hear, uh...
All come to order, this meeting of Green County Council is now in session, please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They need to know those things all.
I just love it. Guys, are you able to hear us?
Can they hear us?
Okay.
I don't think so.
Now they've been disconnected. Let's see, they were just going on like they couldn't hear us.
We thought we walked.
We thought you were ignoring us.
Like a soul inflo.
We thought you knew that, uh, they were going to get us.
I did.
Okay, um, call the men, meeting to order, um, everybody receive a, uh, the minutes.
Yes.
Uh, you'll have a...
How many was in print?
Motion. I got a motion by Ron.
Second.
Second by Jonas, um, roll call, Marvin. Okay, Greg. Aye. Joe.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Kelly, are you there yet? Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, minutes were approved six zero. Okay, highway superintendent, additional appropriations. Who's gonna play?
It's been advertised.
Okay. So this is just for approval, it is for the forty-five thousand dollars, uh, for other supplies.
I'll play it, I don't remember the, I don't remember the numbers, but I'll play it.
Okay, it's forty-five thousand, so, uh, it's, it's been advertised, we just need a, uh, motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brent, second by Jonas, uh, roll call vote. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly, have you arrived? Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes six oh. Okay, our next, uh, item on the agenda is highway superintendent transfer of fund request.
It looks like, uh, transfer sixty thousand from, uh, gas, oil, and lube to road equipment.
This is to advertise, am I right?
No, this is a transfer.
This is transfer, okay, never mind, alright, alright.
From gas to what?
Gas, oil, lube to what?
To road equipment.
How much motion?
Motion by Ron. Second, uh, by Joe. Roll call vote. Greg. Aye. Joe.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Kelly. Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes six oh.
Good job, Nick.
I got that last one, didn't I? I got that last one, I knew what it was about. I didn't write it down last week, or last month, I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you.
I don't have anything else there?
Not, not for a little bit yet.
Okay. I could, I didn't remember how many was on the highway.
I'll hail for you again, I'm sure.
Perfect.
Uh, next item on the, uh, agenda is Bloomfield Public Library Board appointment, and that would be Mr. Axe presenting.
This isn't the most, I'm gonna take this off, I can...
Please.
This isn't one of the most pleasant things I have to do, but as you well know, uh, a couple of weeks ago, Roger Doan, who was a chairman of the library board, passed away due to COVID, and that was David Doan's dad. He also held a seat on the library board, and now that we have a vacancy, we need to fill that as soon as possible. The person that, uh, we are recommending, it's ironic, Roger and I had talked about maybe another vacancy that might be coming up, and I mentioned his neighbor, Linda Maddox, former, uh, teacher down here at the Bloomfield School in the elementary, she taught my son, he said, oh, I think Linda'd be a, uh, very good appointment, and Linda, just so happened, was the one to tell me about Roger being in the hospital, and we thought he was gonna rally, so I asked Linda, I said, well, to kind of, because Roger was alive at the time, I said, to kind of step in for him, if there was a vacancy, would you serve? She said, I'd be honored to, so I think that, uh, we would be, uh, well-served with her, she has done an excellent job, she taught my son, and finally, I will just tell you, you know, we've talked about continuity of government, we've got some things going on, this was a good lesson. Now, mind you, the library is not that big in certain things, but the thing was, we needed people in place to make decisions, we could have some kind of an accident and need to get repairs done, a lot of things can happen, and in the world today, I'm sure if you look back a year ago today, if you would have not said, you would have seen everything that's transpired in the last year, so it served us well, working in continuity of government, and so I would request that you would appoint Linda Maddox to fill out Roger's term at the Bloomfield, uh, Public Library Board.
I'll make that motion.
I've got a motion by Jonas, second by Ron, or...
Joe.
Joe, okay, third by Joe, uh, roll call vote. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Ron. Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero.
Just real quick to let you know, I talked to, uh, Sherry Lewis yesterday afternoon, we've got a new little thing that was coming up, uh, working in continuity of government and with the Health Department, I think when you see this, you're gonna be very happy, uh, new developments come up, and we wanna be ahead of the curve instead of behind the curve, so when, when you see it coming down the pike, you know that we're trying to keep up with everything, so, thank you so much.
You do a good job, Marvin, thank you.
Greg, Greg needs to sign that.
Greg, oh.
I'll sell this on eBay.
Don't, uh, don't get rid of this, the signature should be really valuable one of these days.
That's, that's right.
Hey, Matt?
Is he, uh, is he ever there, buddy? Yeah, okay. I sent it to her, I didn't know she'd been wanting that for a minute. Yep.
There you go, sir.
All right, thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is veteran service transfer request, uh, looks like we're doing four thousand dollars from driver, two thousand dollars for extra hire, two thousand dollars in schooling, for a total of eight thousand dollars into office supplies.
Transfer the two office supplies?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Ron, second.
Right here.
Jonas. Uh, roll call vote, please. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, Green County General Hospital Board appointment.
I don't know how many of you know, but, uh, Beth Gillen had resigned from the hospital board a couple of months ago, and, uh, it's took us a little while to find a candidate, and, uh, we've talked with several people, and, uh, Nancy Hudson has agreed to fill best term, uh, so that is a council appointment, so the hospital board is seeking, uh, your recommendation to appoint Nancy Hudson to the hospital board.
I'll, I'll make that motion, I know Nancy, and she'd be a good representative of the board.
I'll second. Uh, Jer, I got a, uh, first by Jonas, second by Jerry, uh, roll call vote, please. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
I'm gonna note it in the minutes, uh, this is how that...
His wife.
We made thirty-four twenty...
Nancy Floyd.
I have the original, just to let you know, I put that...
That's correct.
Yeah, she's, uh, she's...
Yes, I've got the original.
She's been before going to voter registration a little bit, hasn't she? Or used to be.
Nancy?
Nancy is, uh...
She's on the, uh, election board.
Yeah. Alright, next item on the agenda is the Green County Sheriff, additional appropriation approval.
There's the one they're looking to approve, that we just did from last meeting.
Okay.
It's been advertised.
Thank you.
Trying to move some money, uh, I think the one that is before you for approval, it was advertised, was for twenty-three hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. That was where we were moving our medical reimbursements and prisoner meals, and they were all, uh, money we got back in, and I just asked to have that put back in the, uh, accounts. That was what you acted on last month.
Any questions or anything for anybody? I'll look for a, uh, motion by Ron, second.
I'll second it.
We got a second by Joe. And roll call vote, please. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is, um, sheriff additional appropriation request.
Okay, I still had some transfers here, I think, or it may be additional, um, I had, uh...
What is this, request or appropriation, transfer appropriation?
I mean, this one...
Wait, you're quick, just so.
This is an additional, I know that.
Additional appropriation.
This one we have to advertise for. Yes, these are transfers, these are monies I already have. Yeah, those are transfer, and that's an additional appropriation, too. Okay. Okay, on transfers, that's what we were?
Your choice.
Okay, transfers, I'd like to take, uh, one thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars out of the user agreements for the jail and move that into prisoner meals, I'd like to take, uh, four thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars out of user agreements in the jail, move that to institutional supplies, and also seasonal cook, I had ten thousand dollars, I'd like to move that into institutional supplies.
Ten thousand from what?
From a seasonal cook, and move that into institutional supplies.
Motion by Ron, second.
Second.
Jerry. Roll call, please.
Greg.
Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Next one is the additional appropriation request.
Uh, I got more transfers.
Got more transfers?
I got another transfer.
Oh, alright.
I'd like to take, uh, twelve hundred twenty-one dollars out of gas and sheriff, and move that into sergeant in the sheriff's fund. Uh, take eight hundred five dollars out of gas, move that into longevity in the sheriff's fund, and sixty-four hundred dollars out of gas in the sheriff, and move that into overtime in the sheriff's fund, and then forty-five thousand out of jailers and public safety, move that into prisoner meals, total of fifty-three thousand.
Okay, hold, hold on a second.
I'll make a motion.
This is the one we, we done already.
I don't think anybody likes the sheriff fund, I feel like I'm gonna make a motion for you.
You say what now, since you didn't vote for him, he's gonna make a motion? You said, since you didn't vote for him, he's gonna make a motion?
Am I gonna vote for him?
Brent has made a motion.
Alright, motion by Brent, second, Ron, uh, roll call vote, please. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Sorry about that, Joe.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero.
Any more transfer requests?
That's all the transfers, everything else is additional appropriation. Okay, I'd like to make my September copay, uh, for medical, a thousand eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents, and move that out of the sixty-five hundred account into my medical jail budget, I got eleven dollar forty-five cent reimbursement from, uh, one of the hospitals, I'd like to move that into my medical jail budget, and then I had a reimbursement from Office Depot for eighty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents, I'd like to move that into office supplies in the sheriff's budget, total of eleven hundred eighty-one dollars.
Any questions, comments? I'll look for a motion.
Motion to advertise?
Yes. Motion made by Ron, uh, second.
Second.
Jerry. Uh, roll call vote, please. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly.
Yeah.
Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion to advertise passes seven zero. Where are you taking it to? At eleven hundred dollars? That was, there was three of them, one...
Two of them went to the jail budget, and one went to the sheriff's budget, the jail budget was medical, and the sheriff's budget was office supplies.
Here you go, Joe. Okay, alright, next item.
Next one is a transfer, a, uh, additional appropriation, it does need a little more explanation, I have a, uh, public safety money, in that I have utilities and salaries, uh, due to the way we have a turnover, uh, I usually take that money and shift it around to make sure I pay my own budget out of that, uh, since we went to the public safety, it's a budget all its own, so it's not in the sheriff or the jail budget, where I'm used to being able to get a hold of it to cover some of my other expenses, I'm asking for twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, to be placed into the repair for equipment fund, sheriff's side, now this is basically coming from the public safety, or my projection is, uh, my office paid bills out of the sheriff's budget first this year instead of public safety, so this is not money that I can normally put my fingers on to cover other bills, my projection is that I'm gonna turn, have an excess of seventy-two thousand dollars in public safety at the close of this year, by the time I pay the rest of my monthly bills, so of that, I would ask for twenty-two thousand dollars to be moved into repair of equipment, uh, because basically I've used money this year, it's been a weird year, we've used it for supplies and PPEs and a little bit of everything, but, uh, since this is a rollover type fund, uh, that money comes back to you anyway, so, out of the seventy-two, I'd like to have twenty-two thousand back, that, I'll turn in fifty thousand, but that should get me through the end of the year.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Joe, second.
Right here.
Jonas. Roll call vote, please.
Just to confirm with Matt, this is a motion to advertise?
Yeah, if it's, so what you're doing is, you're asking for public safety and move the general fund for sheriff.
I'm moving, I'm gonna be given seventy-two thousand back, so I'd like to have twenty-two thousand of it to get me through and sheriff.
That's the first thing, Joe.
Okay, so do we sign this today or not? Is this advertised? That's what I was thinking.
I'll make one that will go along with that.
Okay.
So this is on the motion to advertise?
Advertise, yes.
Okay, you had motions?
Yeah, I had one by...
Yeah, Jonas and...
Joe made the arrangement, and Jonas was the second. Roll call, Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly.
Yeah.
Ron.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion to advertise passes seven zero. Anything else, sir?
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Keep it up. Next item on the agenda is the twenty-twenty-one, uh, meeting schedule for the county council. Did everybody receive a, uh, email on this? Um, any questions, concerns, comments on the scheduling? It's about the same as it was last year.
Same as it ended up being.
The only thing is that the pre-budget meeting is gonna be, or a week ahead, a week ahead of September, we usually do it, what, first Tuesday after Labor Day?
Yeah, but the actual budget meetings would, would be before Labor Day, is that what you're saying?
Just like it was this year.
Yes.
All right. Alright, do I have a motion?
Do you have any more questions? Do you have any more questions about it? Oh, no. I thought you were standing right there.
Do I have a motion? My voice got that done like Mark. Did someone make a motion I couldn't hear? Brent, was that your motion?
I'll make a motion, it wouldn't find, that might hurt my dog bark.
Did Jerry make the motion?
I think I did.
Okay.
I'll play it.
Okay, I got a first and a second, uh, roll call vote, please. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yeah.
Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion to approve twenty-twenty-one meeting schedule has passed. Next item on the agenda is the twenty-twenty-one salary ordinance.
I actually am gonna step in, if I may, and pull one of my county attorney items forward, uh, because it likely will have some impact on the salary ordinance, uh, not only because it affects the rest of this year, but the numbers will be reflected in next year's ordinance, you'll remember last month, uh, Doug Hall was here and discussed the need to make some changes in the as-needed employees, uh, at the, uh, ambulance service to try to attract more people to fill those positions, and what we looked at was increasing the rate of pay for EMTs to thirteen fifty, advanced EMT to fourteen, um, paramedic to eighteen, paramedic with advanced certification nineteen, I believe, uh, last, last month's meeting, one of those may have been omitted, but there were in fact four positions that needed to be addressed, so what I have is a proposed ordinance amending the twenty-twenty salary ordinance, uh, to incorporate those figures, and then if that is approved, those would continue into the twenty-twenty-one salary ordinance.
So do you need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so...
I'll make a motion, goes for categories.
Next reservation?
Ordinance, uh, proposed ordinance.
Okay, to raise the, uh, the hourly rate, so I've got a, um, motion by Jonas, do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Brent?
Is that Brent or Jerry?
Jerry.
Okay, second by Jerry, uh, roll call vote, please. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly.
Yeah.
Ron. Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero, ordinance is amended for the remainder of the year, gonna go ahead and circulate the ordinance for signature.
Now I think we're ready for the regular salary ordinance, Matt.
As I may mention, I, I didn't receive any, anything back about you made the motion for the veteran service officer and the, I want her to receive that raise, so you'll just, you'll remember, if you'll, that's okay, you just need to do it now, you do it now and approve it, and that'll...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second, first by Jonas, second by Ron, uh, roll call vote. Greg. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yeah.
Ron.
Yeah.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero.
Now the salary ordinance itself, I have to replace the page with the EMT, and I've got it, I've just had this stapled before I add that to it. I have to replace the page with the EMT, and I've got, I've just had this stapled before, I add that to it.
I'll let you explain what you need on the raises.
The council decided, of course, including the veteran service officer and the coroner, to give one point six percent raises across the board.
Everybody, that's what we decided.
That's what you, well, yes.
Yes, but you was downstairs when that went, when that happened.
But when you included those two, that took care of it.
Okay, so we need to include those so that you have them, is that right? We need to include that.
No, no, you've already done that. You just need to approve the ordinance now.
Okay, all right. So
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jonas, I have a second. By Ron, and roll call vote, please.
Greg.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero.
Next item on the agenda is revenue refunding on the bonds.
Marvin will have to help me here with this a little bit, whenever he gets caught up there. There are three bonds hailed by the building, two by the building corporation and one by the redevelopment commission. That our financial advisors had said they are, this would be the time to basically refinance those bonds. The interest rate's low. We wouldn't be extending the length of the bonds any. And all in said and done, everything, all fees paid, it should save about one point one million dollars over the length of the bonds, over the term. It would be, say, there wouldn't be any, no addition of the time, they'll be paid off the same time, or just interest rates are good enough that it's very lucrative right now to refinance those.
What kind of fees are we looking at for, to get this done?
What, what, what net?
Yes, yeah, this net, net savings, one point one.
I just didn't know what kind of fees it would
I'm sorry, I don't have that information today.
And I don't think we actually know. I mean, it's kind of a part of it's going to depend on what the sale bring is, and all that kind of stuff, so I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of a moving target, but they gave us a pretty firm estimate that the net savings will be one point one million dollars. So that's, it's a pretty huge deal.
Greg, there will be, in each, in each bond case, there will be fees to the underwriter and marketer stiple. There will be fees to Barnes and Thornburg because while I will be involved in the bond process, the finer details, including the securities regulations, are well above my pay grade. And because of the financial analysis and other financial services necessary to the process, there will be fees incurred through London Witty. And the commissioner's financial representative, Jim Higgins, will be involved in that, as he has been historically for a number of years now. Even with all of those involved and all of those, all of the various fees involved, the net savings are proposed to be one point one plus million dollars. The two smaller bonds are the two building corporation bonds. One of those, I believe, was associated with a bond anticipation, a series of bond anticipation notes that were refinanced by bond in 2010. And the other is directly related to courthouse construction. That bond, both of those bonds are paid down considerably, that are still enough to warrant in the commissioner's minds refinancing them. The savings on one of those bonds is a hundred twenty-four thousand plus dollars, the other is about a hundred sixty-two thousand. Both will be paid off, I believe, in 2027. And that's whether we refinance or not. It's just that we save almost three hundred thousand dollars by refinancing, paying them off at the same time. The other bond is a bond with the redevelopment authority. And that is related to infrastructure work done down at Westgate, including the Taylor Township Fire Station, the clinic at Westgate, and a good bit of infrastructure. Roadwork and improvement, sewer water lines, cost of running electrical in places. That was done in 2013. That bond has the largest remaining balance. And if I recall correctly, is projected to save a net of something along nine hundred thirty-two thousand dollars, which is where the big chunk is coming from. And that bond is not paid off, I believe it was, I want to say, was it thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
I was going to say, I was thinking January of thirty-three.
January thirty-two.
Okay, I was close. Thank you, Joe.
It's a no-brainer.
And so, and those are all best estimate net savings figures, net of all costs.
Kind of a no-brainer. So what do you need from us today?
I no, no, I think really what we're needing is for you to know and to have a sense, certainly not to approve these things, but some of the these are going to come before the council at a later date. The building corporation stuff is going to come before the council to approve a revised lease. And that is the council's role in this. The redevelopment authority bond, I believe, has a tax backup on it, and that also is going to be the council's responsibility to approve that tax backup. Obviously, so far, we've not had to rely on that tax backup, and that's certainly the intention, by reducing payments that we're making already and keeping the same payoff date. And so while the tax backup is going to have to be there to get the most favorable bond rate, the likelihood of having to resort to it, not on wood, should be virtually zero. And so I think what we're looking for today is not even necessarily a motion, but just to make you aware that these are on the table, that the commissioners are prepared to make those recommendations to the building corporation and to the redevelopment authority. That the bond process could be starting, and that we will be seeing you again on these issues for, I believe, in November to look at lease approvals for the building corporation and to look at approval of the tax backup for the redevelopment authority refinancing or bond refunding, as it is referred to.
What he said.
Yeah. All right.
Comments, questions, concerns?
We just want, we wanted you all to know what's, what we're looking at.
I think it's a no-brainer, I mean, if you can save that kind of money.
That's kind of what we thought. That's kind of what we thought. We couldn't afford not to at this point in time. Take advantage of this while we can.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the twenty-seventh pay funding. We had a little brain get-together for the, the meeting, I met with Ben and and Joe and Nate, and kind of kept around some ideas on where we're going to come up with the financing to pay the twenty-seventh pay. Basically, we're looking at having to cover a total of just under four hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand by fifty-two twenty-six for the extra pay. How many years does this come around for the twenty-seventh pay? It's like, what?
Ten or eleven.
I was going to say ten or eleven. So this is our year that we have to cover. This will be the last year that we have to do this. With, am I right, with, with the steps that we've taken?
Well, the steps you're taking, you won't have to redo the salary ordinance, but you'll have to make sure the budgets meet.
Right, right, okay. So Ben was on the it's his feeling that there's probably going to be enough surplus left to cover these the, the extra pay on this, so I think it's going to be, we've talked it over, I think we want to table this until the November meeting, until we can see a little closer of where we're going to be at on if, how much and if we need money. So if you guys have any questions, I'll do my best, or Joe, or Nate, or somebody can if you guys have anything. Nate, do you have anything else to add, or?
No, I think, I think we're going to, I don't think the payroll's going to be an issue at this point in time.
That's kind of what we're talking. So if there's no questions or anything, I entertain a motion to table the twenty-seventh pay funding item.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jonas, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Roll call vote, please.
Greg.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly. Ron. Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero.
The next item on the agenda is we have some funds that have some negative balances in them. We have several options, I guess, on what we're looking at as far as paying those. I don't think we've really come up with a, since Nate, I'll let you see what, get your opinion on it and what you were looking at and
I thought we were tabling that one.
Basically, there's a couple of the funds that
I know what we're going to do.
The commissioners control. And I wanted to consult with the other two commissioners before making a, making a call on how we're going to handle that. There's some of it that if, depending on which fund that it comes out of, Marvin would have some work to do with some paperwork as far as a resolution to use that money for that. And then according to Matt, we'll have to have a plan put together for the state board of accounts to how that works, so there's just some more hoops we have to jump through, the typical governmental red tape that has to be taken care of before we could proceed on that, so
Basically, the, you know, the, my recommendation, I think, is to table this also until the November meeting, until the commissioners can come up with a
We'll have, we'll have a decision before then. We'll meet, we'll meet next Tuesday, and we'll probably come up with something for that that we can announce there at our meeting, Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Is that? I think the first one was Jerry, I think.
Sounded like Jerry made the motion. Brent, can we get you to move yours to a second?
That'd be fine.
Thank you, sir.
Roll call vote, please.
Greg.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Ron.
Yes.
Brent.
Aye.
Jonas.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion is tabled until November.
So that's the fourteenth of, so that's the fourteenth meeting?
Oh, I think. Is it the fourteenth?
I think it's the fourteenth.
I thought it was like the twenty-third.
Yeah, that's, that's on the twenty-third. The fourteenth will be the December meeting, Joe. Took me a minute.
Yep, I concur.
I knew that. I was just checking you guys.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the board of commissioners COVID-19 reimbursement process.
As, I think you all know by now, the CARES Act money reimbursements that we've had to deal with the global pandemic, the reimbursement on that, the way that's all going to work, has been changed here just recently to they're basically going to reimburse the public safety tax monies used for salaries and benefits for any employees that are eligible for public safety tax funds, basically. So they want to reimburse that all in one lump sum, so there's not all these transactions going through. Then, and that's, that's great, it's wonderful. The only thing about that is whenever that money comes back in one lump sum, we have to receive that money into somewhere that we'll have access to it. With the end of the year coming here so quickly. And the fact that we have allocated this money, made commitments for this money, expected the reimbursements to work like they were going to in the beginning, and now that's changed. So I don't know if it's actually happened yet, but they said the possibility is we could even have that reimbursement as early as today. I don't know if that happened or not, but they're definitely talking like their reimbursement will be here this week, so it would be available. With the commitments that the commissioners have made already, and along with the other departments in the county, for different, different items to go along with this, there's about three-quarters of a million dollars that is commitments that have been made that have not been reimbursed yet. So this is the commissioners' thoughts that that money would be, would, of course, go into the general fund, then be appropriated into the KIMCAP Development Fund.
So that's including buying an ambulance, right?
Actually, two ambulances.
Is that the three hundred and ten thousand?
Yes. Yes.
All right.
And then also that we would like to not only receipt that or transfer that money into KIMCAP from the general fund, but also have appropriation for that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
How much did you have, seven what? In commitments?
Oh, about seven hundred fifty.
About, okay.
I don't know the exact number.
I had roughly over seven, but these are pretty rough.
Well, and that's what, I mean, a lot of these have kind of rolled in, you know, Matt's been dealing with them as they, as they roll in, and it's been a big pain for him, I know. Because I come down and sign every one of those that he sends in, so I know how big a pain that's been. But that's kind of been, I don't have, I don't, I have them to keep a rolling, rolling total.
And the total reimbursement is?
Uh, it should be in
Just over a million sixteen thousand dollars is the final transmittal amount, I believe, is it?
Right around.
One million sixteen thousand, something change.
And do you, do you know if that was posted to our account today?
If, if, I haven't seen it.
Sure. I have an idea that it would be wired today.
Yeah, so, and I say I don't know.
That's why they sent me to
They're, they're
They say that, that doesn't mean necessarily
So you think more realistically this week?
It'll, it
It'll hit sometime this week?
Yeah, it should be here next day or so.
Tomorrow, Wednesday.
So we're looking at the difference between commitments and what's left of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Thereabouts.
And that's I mean, I, I see no reason why we wouldn't put it in KIMCAP.
Because we could come to you for something else in relation to that too, out of the
Sure. I think that, I mean, that's one thing.
It's a shortfall, it's a shortfall somewhere else.
It's, it's very liquid, it's, it's very liquid in that It's, it's very liquid, it's, it's very liquid in that fund.
Yes, no?
So if you put the whole thing in there, we'd want to up the appropriation from 750 to the total amount. That way then it would be, it would be liquid. You know, there's a lot of times that the commissioners have to act and act quickly whenever something like this, depending on all what else happens. I mean, I'm not the kind of guy that the sky's falling. But it came pretty close to falling this spring. So it's a good thing we had something there to prop it up with.
Joe, if I can address your concern briefly. CUMCAP does have its limits in terms of what it can be used for. And there are, those are fairly clearly set forth in statute. But one of the things that is helpful is that sometimes you, you can look at a need. And while there may be a place, you may not be able to, the commissioners may not be able to address the specific need with a CUMCAP, but they can look for opportunities to address other needs that then would allow the council to reallocate funds already in their control. So that the law is being followed, CUMCAP is used as it is appropriate. And if there is a situation that can't be met by CUMCAP itself, it may be that other monies can be opened up through the use of CUMCAP for particular largely hard needs, so to speak. Obviously, this goes to buildings, improvements, maintenance, ambulance purchases, technology. There's quite a long list in a secondary statute that provide a number of alternatives. And so the thing that I, I think the, the hope to express to the commissioners would be that we can look at that together and see if, even if CUMCAP can't meet the need directly, are there needs that CUMCAP can meet at that point that allow the reallocation of other funds that you already have control over? So that, so that all of the needs are being met.
Yeah, it may, this may not fit, but maybe we can pick something else up.
Takes some pressure off of something, takes some pressure off here to let us do it there.
Sure.
We can work together on that.
Any other questions, comments? I'd entertain a motion.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
You're talking about purchasing two ambulances, correct?
Yes.
What are we gonna do with the two ambulances that were sent out to the Land Fire Department? Do you have any clues?
Uh, no, actually, you'd, you'd have to talk with the ambulance board about that. I mean, I don't, I'm in a hardware, not operations. No, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the, what the status is on that. I mean, I don't, I don't attend the ambulance board meetings, so I don't know what their thoughts are. I just know we're trying to keep the equipment rotation taken care of. And with this- Yeah, and- Yeah, I say, I don't know that, I don't know those details. Joe, you may have some idea what's- I, I didn't hear that last part.
Doug, do you want to come up to the podium where you can be heard by everybody?
I have to talk to the board, of course, but my recommendation, one of them needs to go. The other one is borderline. Yeah, no, they, they need to be auctioned or taken bids or whatever.
Looks like we'll be looking at accessing them in some fashion.
I have a talk to the board.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, they don't take one for a spare or something goes down.
Yeah, we'll still have two.
If we're gonna get two more, I don't know what if we need two sitting there, you know what I mean? If we need to take one as a, as a backup, then, you know, so be it, that's, that's no problem. I'm just curious, in my own mind, what we're gonna do with those.
Right, see, I, I just, I didn't have that answer. I mean, that's, that's the ambulance board.
No, I understand, you're not in Florida, I'm putting that on my team here, so. I was just curious because, you know, I think this money coming in's gonna be great. If we get two new ones, it'd be great. I don't know if we need two new ones or two old ones. It's gonna die on the-
Sure, I know what you're saying. You know, if, if we have access, we need to do something with those.
Yeah, I believe I've worked that week one in the office. I'm like, I'm Michael Manny, Charlie does the job, so.
Good questions, valid points.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
For me, I just want to ask.
Okay.
Board of Commissioners, you plan on passing a resolution the next meeting, right? Yes.
That, that is drafted. This process, the reason the discussion is taking place is because the commissioners are responsible for issuing a resolution to transfer the funds to the general fund to cause a claim to be issued against the CARES Receipt Fund, the 8900 Fund into which this comes in, so that these funds can be transferred to the general fund. And this is a process approved by the State Board of Accounts for this specific circumstance.
So we don't need anything really today, then?
I'm just, we got, I just like to turn that off the wall, please.
Actually, actually, what we need today, what the council needs to look at today, I believe that Matt agrees with this, is going ahead and getting the appropriation process started.
I think, I think it's a good idea. I'm gonna, I mean, just, I may wait till Tuesday, till they approve it, before I actually send it in to advertise. Just make sure that you, that you're, because if the money's not there, they're not gonna look kindly upon me, you know, on that end of it. I mean, it will be there, but, well, no, I guess you have, you still gotta do that so we can pick a claim against it to the general fund. Right. That's the only thing I would say.
We do need to make a vote here.
When they sign on the dotted line, I'll take care of it. Say, but it would be, you would have time now before the next meeting in November. Yes, I was doing the calculations in my head, we're good. As long as you approve it next Tuesday.
Well, I think it's a good idea. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
A motion to advertise.
Okay. I've got a motion by Ron, second by Brent. Is that Brent or Jerry?
I believe it was Brent, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Greg?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Ron?
Yes.
Brent?
Aye.
Jonas?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, the motion to advertise passes seven-zero.
There you go, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is county attorney. He's digging in his file there.
It's not as bad as it looks, and it's dependent on whether you've looked at your email this afternoon. Yep. Actually, the final two, the approvals for approval, and if I've sent those electronically and sent the wrong ones, every one of these reflect a limitation of hours. And 29.
For all of them?
Yes, they're all part-time. Okay, well, that was originally drafted, shouldn't have gone out, and that's my fault.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same-
All right. This is on behalf of the Health Department, asking for approval of three job descriptions. Joe's pointed out that I may have sent an incomplete or incorrect one this afternoon, and in that, something that I emailed may have reflected 30 hours a week. That obviously can't be correct if we're trying to keep physicians to part-time. And so each of the proposed descriptions that we have here, one is a non-clinical intake position, the other is a clinical professional position, either an LPN or CNA. These are temporary part-time positions that will be individuals operating the county's COVID-19 test site at the Highway Department Headquarters once that is up and running, I believe, November 1st. Those positions are going to last as long as there is money to fund them. And longer if more money becomes available. Because the funding for supplies and for people for that has come from a grant from the State Department of Health. So it's not extra money that the Health Department's gonna be asking you folks for. The other position, however, is a position that is going to be a permanent part-time position. It's a licensed practical nurse position for the Health Department. And that is something that was budgeted into their 2021 budget, particularly with things that have happened this year and ongoing needs. The full-time nurse needs some part-time help. And so that's, that is built in. But these are all descriptions, unfortunately, that were sent about a quarter after 1:00 this afternoon. They are pretty typical of what you would see of any physician description if you haven't had a chance to look at these yet. And again, it is emphasized in the headings of each that they are part-time, they are non-exempt, they are limited to a maximum of 29 hours a week in each case.
Do you want to do them one at a time?
I'm here on the conference branch line.
What's that, Sherry?
I'm here on the conference branch line. I just wanted to let you guys know I am here. And the actual start date is the 31st of the COVID test line.
Okay, great, thank you. That's 31st of October?
Yes.
Well, I didn't hear what she said, but we-
That the COVID test site, as operated by the County Health Department, will be open starting October 31st.
Where is it? I've been over here.
It is on the grounds of the Highway Department Headquarters in Swift City, which is to say that it is more or less south of the Carbon Center.
Near Bland's there.
Mm-hmm, pretty, pretty close to Bland's.
How do you want to do these?
Actually, because they're all departmental related, they're all part-time positions. If it's acceptable to the council, I would suggest a motion to approve physician descriptions for Health Department LPN, Health Department non-clinical intake, and Health Department clinical professional in one motion.
So made.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Brent.
Second.
I'll second.
Kelly?
Thank you, Kelly.
Roll call vote, please.
Greg?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Ron?
Yes.
Brent?
Aye.
Jonas?
Any nays? Hearing none, the physician descriptions are approved seven-zero. And as always, I will get copies of these to our HR consultants up in Muncie so that they have a running record of approved job, of physician descriptions. That is the only thing that I have left this afternoon.
Okay. Anything anybody else has?
Yeah, I got one comment. Thank you, Joe, out there?
Yeah.
Do you have any plans on your building for the Highway Department out there?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Any plans?
Do you have any plans for your building out there on the highway?
Uh, yeah, they're somewhere. It's because they've been, we, we had to submit that for a, a state permit, building permit. So either Rogers got some at the Highway Department or the contractor has those.
I have like, look, I don't need a detail, an electrician, but I don't need sure to have a support one.
Oh, yeah, well, Rogers got that. He's got a drawing back that just, he doesn't, I don't know if he's got the actual set of prints that went to the states for the building permit, but- He's got, he had a, he had a initial floor plan from the contractors. So he, he's got, he's got, you know, he's got a basic floor plan without any problems.
We're looking, trying to start on that, you know?
Uh, we're kind of waiting on the contractor now, this whole COVID deal and lack of- number of problems that's got them. I don't think the increase is gonna affect us any on it, but it's the, it's availability.
Yeah, exactly. I don't exactly have that.
So they're, they're supposed to be done by the end of the year, I think.
Hopefully, they're gonna get started pretty quick or do it for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nope, I have nothing else.
All right, anybody else have anything? Jonas?
I'll make a motion.
Adjourned. Second by Ron, all in favor, stand up. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.